This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, January 27th, 2021 City Council meeting for the City of Albany, Oregon. Can we have a call to order and we'll pledge a license, please?
Liberty and Justice for All.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Dick Olson.
Here.
Matilda Novak. Matilda Novak?
I don't see her.
We'll come back to Matilda. Stacy Bartholomew.
Here.
Ray Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Marilyn Smith.
Here.
Alex Johnson II.
Here.
And Matilda Novak. I think Matilda is probably trying to log in, so when she pops in, we'll record that she's online.
Okay. Next up is the old of office for our newest city councillor.
Alright. Good evening. Stacy, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stacy Bartholomew.
I, Stacy Bartholomew.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will commit to faithfully perform.
And that I will commit to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of councillor for Ward Two.
Of councillor for Ward Two.
Of the City of Albany.
Of the City of Albany.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Amen.
And I'm pretty sure it's, so help me God.
So help me God.
Mary froze there for a second.
Yeah.
Welcome to the council.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome.
Well, congratulations, Stacy. Councillor Bartholomew. Sorry about that. Next, that's a proclamation. I'll read it now. For Chaplain's Day, February 3rd, 2021. Whereas in February 3rd, 2021, will mark the 78th anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US AT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four US Army chaplains who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains from diverse religious backgrounds gave their own lives, life jackets to four soldiers, thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of the chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, Lieutenant Clark V. Polling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of the real brotherhood for all time to the people of the world. And whereas, we must all see it, see to it, that their supreme sacrifice along with that of all servicemen and women to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not be in vain, have not been in vain. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, hereby proclaim, hereby complain, February 3rd, 2021, ask for Chaplain's Day. In Oregon, in Albany, Oregon, call upon all citizens to commemorate the day with appropriate observance. In the witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed on the 27th day of July, January 2021. Thank you. So. So next up on. Would be adoption of a resolution, 2021 Parks Master Plan. Was that pulled off or was this, was this still on the agenda?
Still on the agenda.
The master plan is still on the agenda.
Master plan still on the agenda, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Forgive me, this is councillor Novak. I, I don't want to be out of line, so forgive me if I am. I would like to move to reconsider. I, I was not well enough informed Monday night, and it's my own fault and I apologize. Last night after we met, I went through the entire master plan much more closely and carefully than I did before. And I, I. I, I feel like we need to just table this until we've had a chance to look at the budget and, and look at everything together. SDCs, I, I'm, I'm really not, I'm not in, in favor of the impact they would have on our housing situation. And so I, I'd like to see if we could table that for a time.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, Peter.
Clarify something. We need to keep separate the Parks Master Plan and the SDC methodology.
Okay.
So, what we're considering now is not the SDC methodology, it's the Parks Master Plan. What you see on your agenda is a public hearing for the SDC methodology. That's later in the agenda. That's, as a matter of fact, that's the next item. But right now, we need to concentrate on the Parks Master Plan itself. And I believe you may have had an email earlier in the day that Kim has asked if we could actually reconsider the SDC methodology. And I think, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, we've, we've asked to pull that off the agenda. So at this point, all you're considering is the Parks Master, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I add?
Yes, councillor.
The, the master, the master plan seems awfully big and awfully expensive. But it doesn't mean that we absolutely have to do everything there. We can try. But the nice thing about a master plan is that when we see something we can apply for, we can say it's in our master plan, and would you please give us some help in doing this thing that we want to do? I thought I'd throw that in for Stacy's.
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Olson, for that. Any other councillors have a comment?
Yeah. Yep. I'm glad councillor Olson brought that up because, and councillor Novak, because I too think that some of the things in the master plan, you know, like I had mentioned the other night, you know, I didn't care for, but if, is basically to get it in there and then, and it's a living document, so to speak, so it can be changed. Is that correct?
Yep. Director LaDain?
Can't hear you.
Look, I can't hear you. Would you like a comment?
I think she says she's gonna go back out and come on. Okay.
Go out and come back.
Okay, alright.
She coming back in? Somebody just came in.
Yep.
Bottom.
There she is.
There she is.
Any better?
Yes, yes. Alright.
So yes, Bessie, you're correct. While, while the plant, it doesn't just sit on a shelf and kind of collect dust, or at least that's the goal, too. Instead, we are able to take, we have learned and from our community and the priorities that have been set. And as funds become available, we're able to say, okay, here are the ones that we can choose from. Let's start checking them off the list. That doesn't mean if other projects through partnerships or other grants come available, that, that project that was way down on the list, up higher. If we have a specific funding source, that'll be able to officially support that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
So councillors, any more discussion? What would you like to do?
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's six, is that six to nothing? And so moved? Next is. So I have to apologize, I don't have three months. My, my office building was blacked out. Everything east of, east of the cell. Totally dark. I mean, I decided to come back home. Okay. So we're gonna read the resolution. Let's see what page was that on?
Page 90.
Page what? 90. I have to scroll up to every one of these pages. Is the city attorney here to read resolution entitling?
That's an ordinance.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mayor. There's no requirement to read the resolution. That's only for ordinance. So the resolution does not need to be read, and it is past six to zero.
Perfect. Alright, thank you.
What page is the resolution on?
Page 90.
90.
90, okay.
Going back up to the agenda.
And Mayor, do you mind if I speak leading into us pulling off the public hearing for the SDC methodology, just to kind of explain? Is that alright?
Please do.
Sure. So, after our really good conversation on Monday night and kind of hearing your feedback, it became clear that now is not the time for us to discuss an updated methodology. With that said, it is 28 years old and is in need of refreshing. So my goal is to come back to you, if that's in a few months, or after we look at a new methodology, to still present something new so that we can move forward and be more solid. And so with that, a lot of the feedback that I heard was that potentially you might be interested in looking at a different methodology, instead of one with a flat fee for single-family homes, multifamily, et cetera. Looking at one that potentially would provide a smaller fee for homes with a smaller square footage as opposed to larger homes with larger square footage. And so if that is the case, and that is something that, that you're interested in, I would love to get some additional guidance or your approval to say, yes, please go back to our consultants and work up a new methodology specifically with this in mind, as it does have a different legal framework, and will help, essentially, we'd have to kind of start back from, from the first step. So yes, I just kind of wanted to check in and, and see what direction you would like me to go in.
Director LaDain, Kim, councillor Olson had a comment?
Yes, if, if it's the same consultant, would you have, if he's going to present slides, would you have him make them so we can read them? I couldn't get a thing out of, out of his slides. And therefore, I got very little, if anything, out of his presentation.
I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Very much. Councillor Novak, you have something?
I do, yes. With regard to paying for the parks, I am wondering if anyone has considered the option of a bond initiative? To me, that seems really fair, and if we have a public that wants it, let's let them do it, you know? I, I think that should be on the table. I would like to see that considered.
One thing about, and I think it's right with bonds, that we then run into compression. And money that goes to parks then gets piddled away from other stuff. But it might be a good, a good item to talk about on the budget, perhaps, Peter?
Yes, councillor Olson, the other thing about a bond is, is that would help you construct parks. But our big concern with parks is that we need the operating and maintenance money for what we, what we have.
Yeah, there's that, too.
So, building new parks at this point would incur lifecycle costs for maintenance and operating. And that's, that's where we really have the problem.
You can't pass a bond specifically for maintenance?
Well, no, you could pass a levy, you know, a local option levy, but a bond is one-time capital money. So that's for construction. So if you wanted to build a building, you could pass a bond for that. If you wanted to acquire fire engines, you could pass a bond for that. But you can't, you can't enter into long-term maintenance. You can't fund long-term maintenance with a bond.
I thought bonds could be in effect for like 10 years. Forgive me, I don't mean to take time with this, but maybe I just need a little more learning. I'm just trying to find something that won't impact housing in a negative way, because when you tax something, you get less of it. And I, I don't want to see that happen. Where we, it's, we're in a desperate situation, and everyone understands that, so that's, that's my concern.
I would say that, you know, the, the finance director, Gina Jaeger, has passed out or sent out dates and means for signing up for the Department of Revenue's budget training.
Yes, I'm signed up.
They will tell you all about these different financing mechanisms and different sources of revenue. And also at the retreat, we'll have a chance to go over those too, if you'd like.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
And I believe Director LaDain had something to add.
Director LaDain?
Sorry. So yes, thank you for that feedback. I do want to press that it is important for us to revisit this. I know there's never a good time. But part of the reason why we were bringing this up now is because our current methodology does not allow for reimbursement at all. And so we have parks like Henderson Park, which has a 50-plus-year playground that cannot be revitalized. If we pass the new methodology that allowed for reimbursement, we would be able to use those SDC monies for the first time ever to be able to tackle those projects, bring them up to ADA compliance, make sure that they're, you know, vibrant parts of our community. And so it's, I want to reiterate that it's not always just new parks, new land. We can add capacity to the spaces that we already have and make them better, more safe, more exciting, more attractive, if we, if we pass a new methodology that allows for reimbursement fees.
Thank you very much. Director LaDain? Did you, did Martin, anything else, councillor Novak?
No. Yes, thank you.
We'll be speaking more about it in the upcoming training. Councillor Kupczynski, please go ahead.
Just a quick aside, since it's been since 1993, since we had the last update to the Parks methodology, I have no qualms in supporting what was written, because there was an awful lot of time and effort put into it, and I thought it was well thought out. So I guess two more months isn't going to make or break the system, but it's well overdue and needs to be done.
So, excuse me, councillor, is that the master plan or the methodology she's pulling off?
The master plan, pardon me.
Thank you.
I, may I just clarify? I, I no longer, I don't think I have an issue with the master plan so much as the SDCs. I, that's, that's where I think I'm, I'm most concerned.
And we pulled that off.
Having a plan, my understanding was if we have a plan and we pass a plan, then you can go for grant money, right? And I want that to happen. I think we need that source of funding, and if that would enable us to reach out for grants, I, I would think that would, that's a good thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving forward, would you like me to bring the current methodology that we talked about on Monday night? Would you like me to bring that same plan back in a few months after everything's kind of settled a little bit for it to be revisited? Or do you want me to go back to the consultants and kind of start, start at the drawing board again and have them look at a new methodology that waits, you know, smaller fees for smaller square footage, so on? Is, is there any?
Councillor Olson, question?
Go ahead.
Is he going to look at the possibility of having the SDCs be smaller for an inexpensive house than higher for a mansion?
Yes, that would be what I would ask them to redo the, the methodology with.
Thank you.
Councillor Novak? Thank you.
Is there any possibility of paying for these things outside of SDCs? Is that, is the person who's designing this methodology, are they limiting themselves only to SDCs? Are there, are there no other options? Because I see those as potential disaster in terms of housing and, and growth and rebuilding businesses that have been devastated and, and doing things in our downtown that we want to see done. I, I don't think SDCs are a good idea, quite honestly. I.
It costs money to connect to the city, and connect to services as well, councillor Novak.
Say that again?
It costs money to connect to the city and services. SDCs are essential to keeping our city safe, keeping our water flowing, keeping our stormwater clean or unplugged. So the SDCs are.
My, my understanding is, when you put something that's essentially a tax on, on something, no matter what it is, you get less of it. So if you're, if you're going to, if you're going to put what's essentially a tax on, on homes or apartments, the construction of new apartments and low-income housing, that's going to raise the price, which is going to create less of it. If we, we could have beautiful parks and they'll be filled with people who have no roof over their head. I'm, forgive me, I don't mean to be, I'm just really concerned. Is there no other way than, than these, than SDCs?
Councillor Novak, same answer, nothing. What, what, Peter?
No, I think, you know, again, we can table this discussion and have a long SDC discussion at a later date and make it a subject of a work session. But I would like to point out that you're right about the need for systems development charges. If, if growth is supposed to pay for itself, if growth doesn't pay for itself, then who is left to pay for that growth? It would be the rate payer. So if you don't have the developer pay systems development charges, then the rest of us who are paying utility fees will be paying for that growth. And I don't think you want that. And I don't, I also don't think you want future generations to have to pay for that growth. So SDCs are an appropriate, a highly appropriate way to address that issue. The question though is, and what you're grappling with, is how can you structure them so that they don't disincentivize the, the construction of, of housing at the lower end of the spectrum? And that's what Kim will go back and talk to the consultant about. But again, as far as SDCs in general are concerned, that's a very broad topic, and we can certainly study that in depth later.
Okay. Final comment, and then I will say no more on this subject, if I may. My understanding is that in Lebanon, the medical college and the VA hospital that they have are in existence today because there were no SDCs charged, and that saved millions of dollars. I, if, if that's true, that you can do construction without SDCs, it makes it less expensive. And forgive me, I know I need to be trained, and I will, I'm looking forward to training. I just want to put that out there, because that's been brought to my attention. So I, I just, I'm trying to find ways to keep costs low. That's all.
Alright, thank you, councillor Novak. Um, where were we? Where were we? So we moved to approve that. We had a vote on it. It's a master plan. We approved the resolution there? Yes, we did. Mary, did we approve that resolution, correct? Yes, thank you. So we have a public hearing. We removed that public hearing. So business from the public?
Yes, you're at business from the public.
Okay. What do we have right now?
We're going to adopt the resolution?
You did.
We have adopted the resolution to, for the master plan, and the public hearing for the Parks SDCs has been canceled.
Well, yeah, but I thought we were going to adopt the master plan and table the rest.
We did.
We did. We did.
And we, and we voted on the resolution?
Yes, we did. Six to nothing.
You voted yes.
So business from the public? City clerk, would have any business from the public?
Yes, Mayor, and, and Mary, Lisa Grotto had talked earlier, had asked me earlier about coming to the council with a, an emergent opportunity for grant funding. And I'm sorry, Mary, if you have other business from the public, please, please speak up.
There is no other business from the public other than Lisa Grotto and then the email that went out shortly before the meeting started, and Peter, you were going to address that.
Yeah, well, let's, let's have Lisa Grotto go ahead first, if that's okay with the mayor.
That's, that's perfectly fine. Executive Director Grotto, please go ahead.
I want to make sure you can hear me tonight.
I can.
Wonderful. So thank you, Mayor Johnson and councillors. Appreciate your time this evening. As you said, my name is Lisa Grotto. I'm the executive director of the Albany Downtown Association. And tonight, I'm sharing an exciting project for downtown Albany. And as Peter mentioned, we're bringing it to you in this method, because we have a grant opportunity and would like to seize that funding source if we can. What I'd like to share is that our downtown alleys have been a topic of discussion for many years. A cleanup in the organization has always been part of that discussion. Working together with Albany Visitors Association, city departments, Republic Services, Veritone Architecture, as well as the building and business owners, we've put together an idea and are looking to create a new life for one section of one of our alleys downtown. This project would provide locals and visitors a fun outdoor alley dining venue in downtown Albany while expanding revenue opportunities for downtown restaurants. This expanded seating will not only allow more capacity during COVID-19 phases, but provides a long-term destination dining opportunity for us to market for Albany. This project would be a big step in a long-desired alley cleanup in utilizing planned building on Republic Services and the Arts Commission's Dumpster Art Program. You may have seen a few of those around downtown. The funding would be, as Peter said, from a successful attainment of a Travel Oregon Destination Ready Grant. And remarkably, this grant does not require a match. So partnerships, but not a financial investment. Tonight, all I'm looking for is not a vote or a motion, but a simple thumbs up of the concept. Let me outline just a few more things. Well, we already got a thumbs up. I guess I don't need to outline it. But just to let you know the location, you might be curious, this is the alley from Ellsworth to Broad Alvin, behind the First Avenue Restaurants. We're looking at a three-season dining experience, Friday evenings, Saturdays, and through Sunday afternoons. So imagine brunch. Also, the things that would be included would be the cleanup, paving improvement, recycling, organization consolidation, camouflage and concealment. I've already spoken with Julie Jackson on a possible pilot program there, working with the way the recycling is managed. As far as ambiance, evening style lighting, cafe seating. I've already spoken with Chief Wooton. Albany Fire Department is strongly in support of this opportunity as outlined, and we'll work closely with them going forward. Have also spoken to other city departments, Republic Services, and building owners. Very appreciative of Veritone Architecture, who has a large parking lot adjacent to this alley, and that would be included in the seating opportunity. The timeline on this is we will apply next Wednesday, thus coming due tonight. Grant winners will be announced on February 11th. Work starts mid-March with a completion for this summer. So this is get it out and get ready for company right away. So this is all pending successful award of Travel Oregon's Destination Ready Grant and any in-kind donations and lots of volunteer labor. So if you got a pressure washer, we may be calling on you. So I'm looking, as you said, not for a vote or a motion, but a sing, simple thumbs up of the concepts for the use of the alley. Once we've successfully attained this grant, fingers crossed, I will be working with city staff and return for official approval of a license to occupy the space as you would with seating on a sidewalk or any other seating. That's what I have and happy to answer questions or just get your thumbs up.
So, so I have one question, Director. Is it for the whole entire summer, is it next summer, depending on how long this thing lasts?
I would like to see this as a three-season opportunity, so annually, spring through fall. And for this two-and-a-half-day period each week, allowing deliveries in other normal course of business during the working days of the businesses.
Just a question.
Councillor Kupczynski?
Lisa, is there any, I'm sure there's going to be attention made to, certainly be. Uh, Lisa, is there any, I'm sure there's going to be attention made to, certainly be uh, issues for right away, not right away, but ingress egress to the alleys, potentially emergency vehicles or anything like that?
I've had a conversation, as I mentioned, with Chief Wooton. Um, and he has worked with Laura, uh, and they said that they do not anticipate any issues. There wouldn't be any permanent installations. Any tables could be discarded, run over, or whatever we needed to do to provide any needed care. Also, in talking with Ron Irish, uh, we anticipate this to have zero impact on ODOT as closing an alley creates less stalls in traffic and turns than having an alley. So again, we don't seem to have any kind of a traffic pattern issue with this project.
Thumbs up.
Yeah, my my thumbs up, and I just want to say I'm for anything that paves up the alleys and makes them safer.
Thank you.
Not to mention benefits the restaurants.
Well, I would just want to thank you then. Um, I'll work with all the partners on things, we'll get that buttoned up and uh, look forward to coming back with some great news that we get to grant, and uh, if not, we'll find another way, because that's what nonprofits do. And with partners like the Visitors Association and all of you, we've got to make it work.
Thank you, Director Grotto. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I have thumbs up from this entire city council, thank you very much. The next reading, the next piece is, uh, did you want to read the letter?
Certainly, Mayor, I can do that. Uh, the council had received the letter late today from Ms. Ann Ketter, uh, on the Planning Commission. And uh, she had asked that it be inserted into the record and and read at tonight's meeting. Uh, so I'll read. Good afternoon, Matilda and Dick. I'm writing as a citizen of Ward One in Albany. I was appointed to the City Planning Commission in January 2019. It's been my pleasure to serve for two years in that capacity. My term is due to expire in December of this year. I also serve on the Bike and Pedestrian Commission. I'm in my second term with BPC, and I'm the chairperson. I was informed via an email today that the mayor, Mr. Johnson, intends to remove me from my appointment to the City of Albany Planning Commission. Mr. Johnson said he'd conducted a review of all mayoral appointments and decided to make changes. I do not know what review he conducted. I have not had a conversation with Mr. Johnson, and as a result, have no idea why he feels I cannot perform my service to the City of Albany. I sent a message to Mr. Johnson. He replied with the following message. Sharon and her supporters attacked me since I announced I was running for mayor. How can I possibly trust anyone appointed by my predecessor? I am injured and insulted by this comment and the suggestion that I volunteer for my city to represent an individual. I volunteer for my city, my town, the people of Albany. Since Mr. Johnson and I have not had a conversation or discussed my views and hopes for Albany, I cannot understand how he can decide I will not be of service to the city I love. I'm terribly upset and hurt by this and did not feel I could come to the meeting tonight to express myself in person to the city council. I do not imagine that the city council can prevent my removal, but I would appreciate your consideration. I would greatly appreciate it if this email was read at tonight's city council meeting and entered into the record. Thank you for representing me, grateful to serve my community, and be Ketter.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Thank you much, thank you, Peter, for reading that. Council Olson?
Oh, yes, I I'd like to comment. Uh, several of my uh, neighbors and constituents are are being removed. And I can sympathize uh, uh, Mr. Mayor on on that uh, because uh, I I heard about and heard myself uh, unkind comments about um, uh, you and other people running in the last election and uh, um, I I told people that commented to me directly that I I thought it was inappropriate and that uh, uh, this was not a case of character assassination, but I I felt felt that that was a poor way to uh, uh, campaign for a person. And uh, but I would like to say that uh, I am particularly interested in this appointment uh, because um, I'll admit that um, Anne is a a friend of mine and her late husband, Jim, I used to meet him over in the central schoolyard, usually about midnight, walking our our dogs and enjoying the uh, evening breezes. But uh, Anne, more to the point, Anne is the only member, I believe, of the Planning Commission that represents our historic districts. And uh, is a able and I think a fair representative of our historic districts. And I uh, I think, Mr. Mayor, if uh, if you had a chance to talk with her, and I know you can't talk with everybody that uh, comes up, I I think you would uh, see my point that um, uh, she is a ready, willing, and able representative of uh, of our town in general, in particular, historic districts on the Planning Commission. And um, I don't know if the right move is to uh, ask the council to remove her name from consideration, seeing as how uh, we are supposed to endorse your um, appointments or removals. I I don't, Peter, do you know what the appropriate motion or action might be in a situation like that? Or do we just, are we going to consider these names individually and and vote on them?
Well, you.
We approach this.
I would call on either the city attorney or or Mary to comment, but I think it's a decision that you uh, you know, the 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 mayor has a right to make the appointments that he makes, so.
And we endorse that. I think if we were to turn down.
His appointments, certainly.
Yeah.
But that ratification doesn't, as far as I know, does not need to be a unanimous ratification, but. So. Pardon me?
Well, I think it would have to be a majority ratification.
Correct. And uh, uh, I'd ask the attorney and the clerk to comment if they have anything to add to that.
That, no, that's that's accurate, Peter. So um, anyone can make a motion to remove someone off the Planning Commission, and and we're talking about the Planning Commission at this point. Um, that motion can be voted on, and if you have, you know, four four votes, uh, remove that person, and the person's removed. Um, if it fails, it fails, so.
Correct.
So would it be appropriate for me to move that we retain Anne Ketter on the Planning Commission?
You you were you were within your, uh, yes, within your rights to make that motion, correct?
Okay, I'll make that motion and hope I can get a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear you, should ask for those in favor.
I did, that's what I did.
May I repeat the motion and do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, please.
The motion is uh, to keep Anne Ketter on the commission. It was seconded by Smith, and now we're voting on that motion.
Thank you.
Dick Olson?
Yes.
Matilda Novak?
Forgive me, I'm at a bit of a loss. Um, I've never met Ms. Ketter, and I I I am, I really, I'm at a loss. I feel like I'm, I I ought to support the decision of the mayor. I don't know if Ms. Ketter in any way was a person who who said things to Mayor Johnson that made him feel as if he couldn't work with her. I don't know anything about this situation, I just saw the letter shortly before our meeting this evening. So is there any way I can abstain?
No, that's a yes vote.
Abstention is a yes vote? Meaning that I would be in favor of her staying on the on the.
Correct. But if you abstain, if if this vote fails and you abstain again, and someone makes a motion to remove her, your abstention would be in favor of removing her. So it's a it's a yes vote on the motion, regardless of whether it's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to say, I'm I'm so distraught, I didn't understand a word you said. I apologize, I I I I just feel terrible, I just feel really badly. I I I see people's feelings being hurt, and I, like I say, I want to support my mayor and his decisions. I believe he has reasons for the decisions he makes. If, as Mr. Olson said, he heard people saying things that would make Mayor Johnson believe he couldn't work with them. If Ms. Ketter was in that category, if she actually said things that made him feel as if he could not work with her, then I would be in favor of her removal.
Okay, I'll I'll say this, may I say this? I have talked to Mrs. Ketter, and she assures me that she is not part of a gang to obstruct the mayor's.
I did not, I did not say, let me chime in here, I did not say she did. Is my prerogative to, with, as a mayor of this, of the mayor I have appointment, and they serve with my pleasure. And so I made changes based on my research and the things I looked at for the commissions and committees I'm responsible for. I said, I, and I understand people's feelings are hurt. When you bring in a new leadership, things do change, people's positions do change. There's nothing personal against Ms. Ketter, but in the presence of anyone. I felt that these changes need to be made, and after months, weeks of research in Arizona, coming back here, I made the changes I thought would be effective. And that's the reason.
I could not. I sympathize with that, yes.
May I explain how the abstention would work, if that's what Matilda would still like to do, please?
I'd appreciate that.
Matilda, and to all the councilors, when there is a full council, there's all of you present today. If you were to abstain, if the vote turned out to be three-two, then your abstention would become a a no vote anyway, and it would be a tie. So you still could abstain. I'm just explaining to you the parliamentary portion of how that would work out.
So what, so Mary, a minute ago, what we had said was, I think, inaccurate. We said an abstention was actually a yes vote, and I think what we want to say is a silence. If you don't say anything, that is a yes vote, an actual abstention.
Silence, yes, an abstention. Um, the result of an abstention depends on whether or not there's a full council and what the vote is.
Interesting.
Okay, so again, if I were to abstain, an abstention means that I am voting no, as in um, forgive me, what does the no no mean now? I'm, the no means that I don't want her removed, or I do want her removed, forgive me.
The motion is to keep um, Anne Ketter on the Planning Commission, and it has been seconded.
Mm-hmm. So if I abstain, I'm I'm casting a vote in in support of the mayor, is that correct?
If you abstain, you're abstaining for the moment, it just depends on the way everybody else votes.
All right.
You to be an abstention, or we'll end up being a no vote.
And the no would, the result of a no would be that I'm supporting my mayor and his decision?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
That I wish to abstain.
Okay, I'm going to continue the roll call vote. Um, Dick Olson voted yes, Matilda Novak abstained, Stacy Bartholomew.
I I I would like to vote no.
Ray Kupczynski?
No.
Bessie Johnson? Marilyn Smith?
Yes, yes.
All right, we have three yes, excuse me, we have two yes and three no. And the abstention then equals a no, so it's four to two. So let me rephrase that. We have two yes and three no and one abstention. When there's a full council present and the votes are three yes and two no and abstention, then the abstention becomes a no, but since we have, oh, wow, this is so confusing.
You had three no's. And then abstention, the no's went out.
Yes, that failed.
Yes, okay.
So what's, what's, where are we at?
Yeah, I'm I'm just asking, um, does that mean, okay, that off of the committee, do we have to go vote again, Mary? I'm sorry, I little, like you, I'm a little confused too, but I think that that means it's done, right?
It remains two yes and three no, and the abstention, uh, because it wasn't a three-two, it was a two-three. Abstention remains an abstention, so you have two yes and three no's, so it still failed because there was not four votes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The motion failed.
All right.
So as of now.
The motion failed is for a lack of four votes.
But just to be clear, both both people on the Planning Commission are still on the Planning Commission at this moment. Another motion has to be made to remove them from the Planning Commission, and we would vote on that next.
Okay, I was so moved, um, to remove Ms. Ketter from the Planning Commission, as the mayor requests.
All in favor? We're going to do a roll call, Mary?
Okay, the motion is to remove her from the Planning Commission. We need to do a roll call vote. Dick Olson?
No.
Matilda Novak?
Yes.
Stacy Bartholomew?
Yes.
Ray Kupczynski?
Yes.
Bessie Johnson?
Yes.
Marilyn Smith?
No.
That received four yes votes, it takes four votes of the council to pass an action, so that passed. She will be removed from the Planning Commission, the motion passed.
Is that all the business from the public? Thank you, Mary, thank you, councilors, is that all the business from the public?
No, hold, hold on just a second. Uh, Mayor, was there more than one person you were asking to remove from the Planning Commission?
Yes, I I sent a letter to the person as well, and she accepted it, and thanked me for allowing.
Okay, I was making sure, we haven't voted on that, so that one, if if we're going to remove them, unless she is resigned, then the council would need to vote on that, that person as well.
The motion specifically was for Anne Ketter, is what I understood. So the motion that you passed was just for Anne Ketter to keep her, or excuse me, to remove her from the Planning Commission.
This item is on the agenda.
Counselor Johnson?
I was just going to say, uh, the name of.
This was on item number twelve on our on our account, on our agenda.
It is twelve C.
Oh, okay, on the agenda later, we're gonna, okay.
We are still under business from the public.
Got you.
That's what I.
Okay, well, we cleared up one of the twelve, the items under, item twelve, then, okay, fair enough.
So so can I move on?
If you're finished with business from the public, then yes, your next item is first reading of the ordinance for amending AMC 2.04.010. This is item.
City council, councilors, what do you like to do, to have a press reading?
Move out the ordinance to be read the first time, title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The attorney?
The motion that the ordinance does not read, does not require a motion to be read the first time, the city attorney automatically reads it.
Okay, great. All right, here we go, an ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, section 2.04.010, regular meetings.
Sean, you're on page two.
Ah, wait a minute. What do you mean I'm on page two?
Ninety-two.
Yeah, that's what I just read, or no, I read ninety-three, ninety-two is the memo. Did I read the wrong?
I have ninety-one, that's that's not there anymore. Um, ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code is on page ninety, my document.
Ninety what, Mayor?
Ninety-three.
On page ninety-three.
Right.
Ninety-three is the paper agenda.
Ninety-three. Ninety-three.
I just want to make sure. I just read that. Did I not come through with something? Did my sound go off? I'll do it again.
I didn't hear it.
Oh, okay, can we, can y'all hear me now?
It was so short, we are not used to it being such a short title. So go ahead, Sean. Again, it's just a very short title.
All right, here you go. And I'm reading it for the first time. An ordinance, an ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Section 2.04.010, regular meeting.
I would move that the ordinance be read a second time, entitled only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City attorney?
May I have a vote? Was there any no's?
Was there any abstentions?
And I know...
Voted no on reading the second time.
But I think it might be educational for Stacy.
So we had it, we had it first and I said aye. Was there any, those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Yeah, one opposed.
Reading it the second time.
Oh.
Okay, the vote is five to one and because it did not receive a unanimous vote, it automatically comes back to the next meeting for its second reading.
All right.
The ordinance does not pass and you move on to the next item.
Okay, thank you. Back to the agenda. Okay, adoption, can we do the other ones? Do they pertain to that, pertain to that particular motion, right? Resolution?
I believe, I believe, Sean, I believe the ordinance has to pass before we can adopt those resolutions. Is that not correct?
No, those would...
Did it again, Mary?
Yes, it did.
Let's see what the...
It has to be put off till the ordinance passes.
Yeah, we probably need...
Resolutions will also be...
Yep. We should pull those until the next meeting, until we pass the ordinance.
That's just Resolution 9A. We can still, you can still consider B and C.
We can still, we can get rid of 9A and then consider B and C?
Yes.
Okay, so cooperative procurement of portal radios and equipment on pages ninety-five and ninety through ninety-seven. Council?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's six. Those opposed? Motion passes. Nine C, adoption of resolution, cooperative procurement of DocuSign cloud services, page ninety-eight, one hundred to one hundred. Council?
Move for no.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Award of contract, special procurement contract of Beck mechanical process control equipment, pages one hundred to one zero four. As a resolution, council?
Is there a staff report?
There's staff, yeah, there you go, there's a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn this over to Scott LaRocque and he has the staff report for this item.
Excuse me, staff? I was trying to get used to my new, my new camera.
Excuse me, before you get started, Counselor Olson had a question.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say it would be nice to explain what we're doing for our new council members. And you're prepared to do that. I just wanted to make sure they got in here and were able to do it.
Okay, thank you.
So what we should have in front of you is a resolution requesting special procurement for Beck actuators. And for some background information, actuators are pieces of equipment that open and close valves or gates automatically or remotely. And we use them throughout the city facilities. We have hundreds of these, particularly at our water and our wastewater treatment facilities. But they're also used in the lift stations, the water pump stations, the reservoir and the canal. We have several different types, brands and quality of actuators. And this is because the, it's often determined by the designing engineer for the facility. And certain engineers and companies tend to put the same brands at their facility. So you end up with a wide array of different types and brands of actuators. And over time, you know, service and repair become an issue for this. And we have pretty good examples of this throughout our system. And it's not always just that we can't get parts, but see, at the AM Water Treatment Plant, we have a type of, a brand of actuator that is Keystone. And it's been out of business for years. So anytime we have any kind of failure with a Keystone actuator, our staff know automatically we have to replace that actuator with a new one. We cannot repair it. Another type that we have at the wastewater plant is EIM brand actuator. And we can sometimes get parts, but we often can't get service from that company. The nearest service tech that they have is based out of Spokane. And if we can send an actuator to them, it usually takes, it can take three to four months before we get it back. And we often don't have that kind of time we needed. And these are critical facilities. And usually we need it more timely, so we end up having to replace it. Sometimes it's a good brand, quality brand actuator, but the company has decided to phase out the model. And that's what has happened on the canal, which is what brought me to you. We have four actuators that are less than two years old. And they're a little bit larger than our normal size. And they're about $12,000 piece. And they were, we were unknowingly sold a model of actuator that has been phased out by that company and is no longer supported, meaning that we, even though it's a fairly, you know, new unit to us, we can't get any parts for it. And they're failing and we have to replace them. And we'd like to go away from brands that end up doing that to us. And a few years ago, we started using Beck brand actuators at the water plant and at the wastewater plant. And they've been a really good actuator for us. They have excellent service staff. And often if we call them up, we can, we can get a tech onsite from them within a day or two, which is pretty unheard of. They tend to, they support their older models. I was talking to their rep and he said, you know, he flat out told me, if there's an actuator, as long as it's not 50 years old, we can get, or make a part for it if need be, which is excellent to our ears. So they've been excellent to work with. And we, like I said, use them at both water and wastewater plants. And we'd like to continue using them. They're an American brand. They've been making actuators since 1936. They're made completely in the USA. So our thought was, we need new installments or replacements of actuators in the future. We'd like to start using Beck. And this would save us some administrative time, but also more long-term, it would allow us to keep our units, keep the life of our units by being able to repair them. And they provide excellent service for that as well. So that's why this contract is in front of you. Are there any questions?
I think you have your three-minute limit, but I was mainly interested in hearing about the cooperative way that we're going to buy that with another city. Maybe Chris can fill us in on that.
No, I'll let Scott. Go ahead.
Okay.
What was that?
He's interested in the cooperative purchase.
Cooperative purchase?
How that works.
So...
Our new council people.
So what this would allow us to do is, instead of having to go out to bid for every single particular, you know, anytime we have something that's over $10,000, we end up having to go out to bid for it. And sometimes it's hard to get what you're really wanting to do. So unlike in this case with our actuators, you could end up with, if we didn't do the repair at the, you know, all four units at the same time, you could end up in a situation where you bid it out and you end up with two of a certain type of actuator versus, you know, in a couple more months when you do the other half, you end up with two of another type. And that's cumbersome for staff for trying to maintain and having different types of actuators, different types of pieces of equipment that are doing the same thing, but having to work with different maintenance on them. They have different parts.
Counselor Olson, I think what I can, I can help answer your question. And I was going to try to also offer a little explanation for the new councilor members. Can you hear me okay? I'm using my earpiece. Okay, so the type of procurement we're doing here and the reason this is coming to the council is because typically when we're buying with public money, we have to go out to bid. It has to be competitive bid and that whole process is well-defined in law. What we're asking for with this item is a special procurement where we can specify this particular manufacturer, which removes us from that competitive process. The competitive process over the years, as Scott said, has led us to have this hodgepodge of equipment that some works and some doesn't. It's not easy to maintain. There's no consistency. And this would allow us to have better control, a better product and more efficient use of our time. It's not a cooperative agreement. So the two items above that were passed by resolution were cooperative procurement. It's another type of procurement method. I'm not the expert. We have a procurement specialist that works in finance. I'm not sure if Diane is on the meeting or not. But a cooperative procurement, we do belong to several cooperative purchasing agreements. The state of Oregon has one, their state of Washington has one. And there are a lot of types of equipment in cooperative agreements. This particular type of equipment is not. And we want to specify this manufacturer. So that's why we're requesting this type of procurement. What you'll see over the years is public works will come to you with a lot of contracts and bids that need to be awarded and they're just, they're competitively let and meet all of those rules. This is sort of taking us out of that process. And so we need special council approval to do that. Hopefully I touched on a few points.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Bailey. I appreciate that. Any other questions regarding this procurement? Council?
I would move to approve the contract. I was checking that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's six. And all those opposed? No opponent, no one opposed. Resolution passes. Adoption of the consent calendar is the next item.
Move to approve.
We have a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passed. Next one is, oh, my battery's running out. Oh my gosh. Counselor Kupczynski, get ready because my battery's running down. Give me a sec. Okay, sorry about that. Next thing is staff reports, staff reports, annual code enforcement report. Who's going to speak on that?
It will be Chris Chendell.
Hello, Mayor. So every year we do a code compliance annual report. Oftentimes this is with Marilyn Smith when she was in her city position. But this year with so many new councilors and stuff, I decided to do kind of an annual, but also a recap on the last five years. And you'll kind of understand why as I get into my presentation. That's important. So if I could get the screen to share so I could open up my PowerPoint, that would be awesome.
Did you get power control?
I have that now. I just got it right now. Can everybody see that? Okay. So... So to recap the five years, this position, my position, code compliance officer was started on July 1st of 2016. It was started as a five-year pilot program, which is why I'm going to give a kind of a five-year recap plus to educate some of the councilors. Currently it's funded as a 50-50 split between Central Albany Revitalization Area and the general fund through a building division repayment of a loan, which they received kind of the economic downturn, 2008 era. Since the start of this position, I have developed and modified 12 municipal codes to address livability issues and responded to over 3,000 calls for service and developed a large multi-agency collaboration between volunteers, outside agencies, inside city and state, different agencies. So I went through all the years that I've done and the previous annual reports that Counselor Smith and I worked on since 2016 during her time as the communications officer. And I pulled those together and tried to pull out some more significant cases from each year. I think Counselor Smith might enjoy the kind of track through history that we endured. It's just a small portion of the properties and code violations that we were able to address in the last five years, but kind of just show what those codes have done. So as part of those codes, foreclosures, derelict structures and such came about, or derelict structure code. 2119 Crocker was a good example of that. The house in foreclosure, when the owner passed away, his family members moved in with a group of other people in the location, had no utilities or trash services that were maintained and multiple neighbors began to complain about traffic and activity at the location. The city eventually evaded the keeping junk violation, disposing of 120 yards of trash that had piled up around the property and on a vacant neighboring property, which you can see on the left side of that photo. After the bank completed the foreclosure process, the city recovered all costs and the houses were sold. The house in particular on Crocker and then the house next to it actually was sold as well. And the city went from responding to 43 calls for service in two years to only two calls for service in the last three. This one, most people should know, one of the former, four former signs of victory locations, an old duplex which had been converted into a shelter, was grossly overoccupied with 27 people living inside the structure, some of whom were found to be living in closets approximately three feet by five feet. A location eventually closed due to many violations and the opening of the new signs of victory on Jackson Street. Since its closure, the locationish sold and been completely remodeled into a two-unit duplex. The city went from 188 calls for service in two years to seven calls within the last three.
Is that since it was remodeled?
Let me go back. Sorry about that. Sorry, say again.
Did you say you had all those calls since it's been remodeled?
No, so we had 188 calls before the closure and we've had, what did I say, seven? Yeah, seven in the last three years. So it, when it closed and, what would that be, 2000, the end of 2000? What would that be, 2000, the end of 2017, I believe? That's when our call log stopped. Say again?
It is still a problem.
Oh, no, nope. We don't get any calls there. The calls there were actually mostly medical. We had a, there was an elderly individual living there. That had some issues that were requiring response. So no, no criminal issues at all.
Good.
So from 2017 to 2018, those staff reports, we had the other three signs of victory houses. Located at Fourth and Kalapuya. These locations were modified excessively without permits. Individuals were found to be living in rooms under staircases and electrical wiring was sourced through a maze of extension cords. During a rainstorm, one modified living area's ceiling absorbed so much water that the drywall fell on top of the individual sleeping underneath. The city eventually closed all the structures due to safety issues. And through a foreclosure process, the buildings were. Sold and then resold and eventually demolished. Currently, I just looked up at the end of last week, there's permits pending for new construction on site. The city went from 139 calls for service in the two years, so 16 and 17. To six calls for service in the last three, so 18, 19 and 20. Sorry, clicked the wrong way. 4357 Southeast Columbus Street. Went through our, it was abandoned, abandoned foreclosure, had lots of structural issues. The picture on the right there is of the ceiling on the inside of the house and you could see to the outside. It had a mushroom like grove inside the house that was growing because of all the moisture. Neighbors called in multiple livability issues, drunken trash, junk and trash on the outside of the house and trespassing from different individuals onto the property. Through the derelict process, I was able to get ahold of the bank. Hold them accountable for the structure causing blight in the area and the bank eventually stepped in and. Finalized the process, sold the house to a rehabber who eventually fixed it up and sold it. In 2018 through 2019, we had 21 of our cases, it was 2838 Northwest Arlington. The house had caught on fire, which caused it to be vacated due to heavy damage. The owner later passed away due to other issues. During that time, the family's estate went into probate, which took multiple years, but neither one were wanting to take action. I eventually cited both. Children that were in the probate process because their unwillingness to clean up the property. Another family member stepped in and became a mediator between the two. And eventually was able to sell the house to actually a neighbor who's building a new house on the property currently for his daughter. 2225 Salem Ave, location involved multiple livability issues, house codes. Previous owner ran a repair shop out of the address, among other things, location caused surrounded area to be evacuated due to a. Gas main being broken after the owner had turned too tightly in a non-parking area and latched on to his gas meter. It was eventually deemed uninhabitable after a structure fire. The owner recently sold the property to a flipper who. After getting into the house and kind of cleaning up, decided that he is going to demo the structure as it's unsalvageable and rebuild on site. So 1325. Point five Kalapuya Street Southwest is, it's a rental. An elderly male lives there at the location and he allowed his son to move in. His son likes to ride around the city and kind of collect items that have been thrown out. And bring him back to his house or his father's rental. The landlord was in the process of possibly evicting the elderly male due to the mess that his son was creating. And we discovered it during a big pickup event. Volunteers. So if you don't know about the big pickup event, we currently are doing two. So we do a big pickup and then what we call the little big pickup. The. This event during non-COVID times, we get anywhere over 100 volunteers that go out and do different. Cleanup activities in North Albany. They do vine pulling for parks, a bunch of different things. We also get volunteers that go down to a dump site. More recently, that's been at Public Works Facility Operations and we. Invite people to bring their trash, which we will get rid of them, get rid of for them at a cost of $5 a load instead of. The driving it to the dump in pain. I can't remember what it's up to now. 45, I believe, something like that. So they, they come down there, they pull up, our volunteers will unload their car and. The past, I believe it's three, at least two, we've done eight dumpsters full. And then the last, so the last one we did, which was during COVID. We did 240 plus yards of trash and we also collected 234 tires, which was more than we've ever done before. So that's all trash that we're getting off the streets of Albany and outside of the neighborhood to kind of get rid of blight. But it's also a good example of how that event brings the community together to be able to. Help individuals that are elderly may not have the funds or the physical ability to do so. And we're able to connect them with resources. And go out and make that happen for them. So we are able to get rid of a violation that would normally cause a citation without having to go through that process. 1310 Hill Street, previous owners passed away with no heirs to step in for the property. The house sat in limbo with the bank for multiple years, during which time a group of squatters broke into the house and forged documents under the old owner's name. When I found out about this, I was able to get the bank involved. And get them to accountable for the blight being brought in and had them finalize the paperwork. They eventually sold the house to another like rehab company who rehabbed it and sold it. And that's how it currently stands. More recently, we're up to today. So more recently this year. We've had behind the wheelhouse, which is kind of a continuous problem. This area had a large group. A large group of. Sorry, I missed my page here. Two individuals took advantage of the cover underneath the Dave Clark Trail. So if you go, if, if you look at the wheelhouse building on both the. What would it be? The east and west sides of that building, the path has certain points where it kind of goes into the dirt and creates about a four to five. Some places where it's been dug out six foot kind of alcove that people have been going into. And they've slowly dug it out more and more so that it's allowed for this kind of stuff. It's led to a significant amount of accumulation of trash underneath as well as down by the banks and we receive a lot of calls of like drug trafficking. And just suspicious behavior around those two spots. After some work with parks and rec and getting some notices to the people who are living under there. The city was able to get under there and clean it. This cleanup effort totaled 15 yards of trash. But it's still an ongoing issue. I talked to Rick Barnett with Parks about trying to find a permanent solution that we're working on. Currently, the parks, he estimates spends about $1,000 a year cleaning up the east side of this. Path due to that alcove. They've also spent approximately $7,000 on fencing to attempt to. Hinder people from getting under there, but it hasn't really helped. So the cost of cleanup and yearly and what they've done so far really hasn't done the solution. So we're trying to find one that be more permanent in the form of like. A spray and concrete or something like that, which obviously increased cost, but. Working on that is currently a goal to try to mitigate the ongoing cost of that project.
Hey Chris, this is Bessie. Could you go back one page, please? Yeah. Oh, no. That one on the top, on the top left. I'm hoping that's just a Halloween decoration.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was a dog.
Oh, what?
Yeah, there is multiple mattresses. I mean, 15 yards of trash, quite a big load and that's not counting the stuff that was down by the river. I'm sure a lot of you know Russell Hawk, he lives down there and a few other groups down there walk the path often and collect stuff. Russell goes around in his boat and will pull stuff out of the river. I talked to our prime prevention specialist who's been in contact with Mr. Hawk. And he says on average, you know, every week he, he'll take a block two to three times. He gets a five gallon bucket of trash off the path. And then on average a year going through the river, he gets about six to 10 yards of trash. So it's, it's something that's not just, you know, for shelter. It's, it creates a huge hazard for the waterway and polluting that.
And so that is a real skeleton?
No, 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 it's a plastic dog skeleton.
That's what I was, yeah, I thought, whoa, man, you're doing a real good job.
It's, oh, sorry, go ahead.
For a barrier, I'm not being altruistic at all, but got a few. Long strings of concertina down underneath there preclude some access.
It's. I know. We've gone over lots of things. The wheelhouse building owners have been very. Very helpful. They, they've offered, you know, putting up cameras that we can have access to, all these things to help mitigate or at least. Get ahead of anything that's starting down there just because of the amount of trash that then occurs. Plus the amount of stuff it brings on to their property, you know, that's an easement that runs behind their property. So they've been very good to work with. But in addition to the trash, there's also a safety hazard. If you guys go look there. You know, when anybody, officer or the people jumping over the fence there to get to this area, there's about 11 inch to 12 inch walking path. That goes from the path over the fence and then kind of walks along the gate there on the opposite side of the concrete walking path down under this spot. Well, if you're to slip, just as you jump over the fence, you fall into just a large blackberry bush. And if you go just a little bit further past that, you're going to slide. Just to the, if you're looking at the right picture on your screen, just past him, you'll slide pretty much down to the waterway. Well, currently if you're there, the water is up past where that trash is. It's pretty high up to where the people stay under. So you're going to go right into the waterway. And with rains, the swiftness, you could potentially just get swept away. So it creates a hazard for not only the people that are using it as shelter, but officers will respond to the drug calls and all that.
Right.
So the permanent solution is what's important there to mitigate any of that.
So Chris, this is Bessie again. So this is continuous in this area. What?
Yeah.
Yeah, what can be done? What can we help you?
So right now we're, so we did this project at the end of summer, I believe. And then. One of the neighbors, I think, oh, no, Rick Barnett emailed me saying, hey, we got a couple more people under there, which was the exact same people that were there before. And they ended up going out, my unit, my sergeant and a couple CSOs went out and addressed it as soon as we knew about it and we got a truckload out of it. So. About three yards of trash. And, you know, went through and tried to get them and got them out of there again. So right now. Through processes that we're working on, on some of the houses that we have. That have been vacant for a long time, have lots of fines because banks aren't stepping in, stuff like that. We're working on taking those properties and foreclosing on them and then taking some of that money that we're getting in. To address these system solution, a salute to bring a solution about for these perpetual issues. So that's how we're trying to procure that money, but it's taking some time.
May I ask?
We're kind of low on funds. We have to be pretty. Creative with how we're going to make that work.
May I ask a question? And this might be nuts. I have no idea. I'm just wondering, Counselor Kupczynski suggested concertina wire. I'm wondering. How much concrete would it take to fill the alcove? Because if you, if it was full of concrete, you couldn't, there would be no alcove. And that would be more permanent, I think, maybe.
Ultimately, like a spray concrete would be a little bit lighter than concrete. Obviously, it's going to take some engineering to look at it. To see what it's going to support and that kind of stuff. But that's, we want the most permanent. So that's kind of the way we're moving. With the dangerousness, sorry, with the hazards of jumping over the fence permanently, I'm not calling out anyone to give me bids. So as soon as the water level starts to lower, I'm going to work on getting some contractors down there. And some engineers to see what we could do to make it the most permanent. Cause I, there's lots of solutions such as a fence, but a fence is easy to dig under. Where if it's a concrete, you're going to have to chip away at forever and ever. That's more likely to stop the process. So, yeah, we're going, I mean, my, my ultimate goal is to have it as permanent as possible, not anything you could dig under or dig through or something that's going to. Not be worth anybody's time.
Good.
Thank you.
So 2205 Front. It's a dangerous building with multiple code violations. The back of the house where the main master bedroom was, that actually is that left photo. That hole you see in the wall there is there when they slept, the whole back half of the house or mobile unit had fallen off. The roof was leaking, had infestations. Attempted to work with the homeowner regarding the safety issues and at least correcting them so that it'd be a livable facility. Eventually that never happened and the city moved to abate. The brother of the homeowner stepped in and has since got the title of the property. He is currently. I took this photo, but then after this, the brother actually pulled a demolition permit and has demoed the structure and plans to move in a new. Structure and then sell the property. So it's actually changed since this photo even. I wanted to point out some focus areas since I started. And so I'm almost done. I promise it's not much longer. I'm trying to go fast. So we had the Central Albany, Albany Parking Area, which. Half of you were part of. Businesses in this area, which is near 11th and Jackson, 13th and Jackson and circles around industrial Montgomery. We're having issues with high activities of drug use, disturbances, vandalism, trespassing, et cetera. These issues were brought on by people who had no business to conduct in the area. With any of the surrounding companies. The city council voted. After a draft to enact the Central Albany Parking Area, which required permits to park in the business district. And after which, when it was put in place, we saw a decline of 45% of calls for service to the area. This one, this is one I've been working on since I started. So the Queen and Hill neighborhood, which I'll call it encompasses Jackson to Hill and 13th to Queen. In this area, we had a large kind of focus group of drug houses, vacant foreclosures and derelict structures. Each red dot is a dot I had large cases on. Through the livability codes that were passed when I first started, I was able to reach out to banks, landlords and tenants and start addressing all these issues. Parties and violations were given clear expectations by the city and held accountable. For their follow-through or lack thereof. Since the last house. Since the last house was addressed towards the end of 2017, the city has seen a large decrease in calls for service to the area. This area has seen an average of 41.1% less calls for service to the area. And when you account the average drop throughout the city, that's 15.3%. It's much higher. So really taking into account statistics. Calls for service, not only of our agency, but a fire agency, because they go to houses that sometimes are unpermitted occupancies. We were able to address multiple drug houses and high theft. And that area has been able to sustain a low call volume, which has been pretty good. And when I talk to neighbors in the area, because I still like to drive. And when I talk to neighbors in the area, because I still like to drive through there, they haven't seen any uptick. And we've seen all the houses have been either rehabbed or demolished. So I didn't want to put all those photos in here, but they've all been completely changed. So what's to come? So looking at the future of livability in Albany, I'm currently working on creating and modifying multiple municipal codes. This includes the creation of a food truck code, updating of the transient merchant code and additional code language to address basketball hoops. It also includes the reorganization of the livability code so that Albany residents can have an easier time finding them under one section, as they currently live under ten different sections. We're also trying to continue streamlining of how code compliance functions by automating many possible processes as we can, and focusing more on just the major livability issues that are time sinks. So stuff, when I first got hired, it was mainly brass and signs, the little livability things, those have become more of a, you know, you get a notice, and then if you're not complying by the time the notice expires, then you get to have that one-on-one contact with me. And as we've made that more and more streamlined, we've been able to spread out our grasp on the higher demanding projects. And then, the last thing, like we talked about at the beginning, the largest hurdle that will need to be overcome is locating funding to continue my position. As stated at the beginning of this presentation, this position was a five-year pilot program funded from CARA and the general fund through the five-year loan repayment of the Albany Building Division. Now with this funding ending, a permanent funding source must be identified or the position will be discontinued. And then that stuff, prior to my existence, Marilyn was the code person. When I came around, me and Marilyn kind of were partners in crime, and as she left and retired, then it went to just a one-person show again. Though we do the best we can, I feel, as if, if the position ceased to exist, it'll kind of go off into the night, and a lot of these issues won't be looked at anymore. So, you guys have any questions? I know that was kind of a rapid fire of five years of work, but I wanted to give you a little bit of background on what we've done.
Great work, Chris. I had a question, there was a property that was the Fury or something, or other property, or can we not bring that one up? I'm sorry, oh, yeah.
What was the property?
Well, we got a lot of complaints about, John, can we talk about that?
Yeah, it's currently subject to litigation now, so we probably ought not to talk about that in a public session, because then there's been a federal, okay.
Thank you. Counselor, who's up there? Counselor Johnson, you have a question?
Well, I was gonna say, I hope that we can keep this position because Chris does such a great job. I mean, he really is so fit for this position, because he treats people with respect and yet firm enough to get them to do, you know, what they need to do. I had experience with him on, on the Crocker House, and let me tell you what, what he did and what he does is so important, and, you know, I know he needs another sidekick, I'm sure Marilyn misses it terribly. Not, but anyway.
Fully suckering Holly Rotten into it, and I've kind of ruined a lot of my shenanigans, so I don't know if she thinks that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think mostly a good thing.
Very good, but anyway, if we can keep the position, I hope really would support it totally, thank you.
And I, this is Counselor Novak, I want to comment and just say thank you to Mr. Shindel, I, this is a first for me, seeing the kind of work you do, and I support you wholeheartedly, and I'm very grateful for what you are doing to make Albany more livable.
And, and Chris
You guys have any, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I echo the same thing as other counselors, I've known you a couple of years now, and I've heard nothing good, positive things about you and the work that you do for the city, so thank you so much.
No, you're welcome, I, I'm blessed to have been laid off and found a position that I really love and enjoy and don't ever want to go away from, so it's been kind of eye-opening to see your life change in a way that you didn't think was gonna happen, but really are passionate about. So if you guys have any questions or anything, feel free to reach out to me whenever, or if you see something you think needs to be addressed, I always try to motivate anybody to give me a call, sometimes too much. My daughter was sick last week for two days, and I came back to seventy voicemails, so sometimes that happens, but that's why I like this job.
So, city manager, please speak, taking the floor.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor, I don't know what crimes Marilyn Smith has participated in, but she's not a partner in crime with Chris, I assure you of that.
I am a partner in crime prevention.
Also, I just wanted to point out that, notwithstanding all the compliments that Chris richly deserves, crime or code enforcement is actually a, it leverages assets that we have, it helps prevent further and bigger problems, and it helps to, to save us money in the long run, so we'll make every effort to identify those funds.
And I imagine also that you put yourself at great risk going on some of these properties, and you can't, you know, discount that, you know, whether it be debris, falling objects, holes, movie traps, whatever, and we know you put yourself at risk for us, and we do greatly appreciate it.
Chris, are you, is the SEPTET program under your purview at all, or is that process still going on?
Yeah, so I, I'm the only one that's like professional SEPTET certified in the city. We used to have, when we had Brad Connors around and he was doing crime prevention, he was also certified, and then his replacement was certified, and she quickly left, and since they've replaced that, she has not been, so that's something that's kind of, unfortunately, one of those things that if people call me, I'm happy to go out and do, but I don't have enough time to get out there and kind of be proactive with that side of my job. But it is still around, it is something I'm pretty passionate about and think we should look at more focusing on, but not something I'm actively pursuing currently. And if you guys don't know what SEPTET is, it's crime prevention through environmental design, so designing your living space in a way that will make people feel like they're being watched, or that it's not okay to do crime, it's more of like a, it's hard to say, more of a psychological way to reduce crime, not so much of like a fortress method of putting bars and stuff on windows.
It does work.
Yeah, it works very well.
Thank you, that was an acronym, SEPTET, S-E-P-T-E-T, or C?
It's C.
D-T-E-D.
CP, yeah, so I'm like
D-E-T-E-D, thank you.
Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, lots of stuff on that, lots of research too. Anyway, I'll let you guys go, again, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, happy to help out wherever I can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, our staff report to be, item B, appointment of changes to development code, Community Development Code Commission, are you gonna take that one, Holly, or who's gonna address that one? Can we stop the sharing? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, I can speak to this briefly if you'd like.
Please do.
So on page one twenty-seven of your agenda packet, there's a memo included related to Mayor Johnson's request to remove two members in the middle of their terms from the Community Development Commission, that would be the first distinct action, the second action, which you would do through a separate motion, would then, if you did decide to remove those members, would be to replace them with mayor, the mayor's requested new appointments. So there's two motions there, if the council so chooses to pursue that.
Do you want to do those one at a time, or en masse, or how does this work?
One at a time would be preferred, the municipal code does require that these appointments be removed by the council, so that would be through a motion and a vote to approve, and then subsequently, you would make a separate motion to ratify the mayor's new appointees.
Okay, all right.
Should I move to approve, first motion?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed. I'm opposed because one of my friends is involved.
Thank you, that motion was to remove the two members from CDC, and it passed five to one with Olson voting no, correct?
That's what, Dan?
Moves to ratify that motion then?
We have to ratify the other two.
That's a, that's a
Your next motion would be to add Morris and Larson to the CDC, that would be the motion that someone would need to make and be seconded and voted on.
So move.
Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Move to, those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is, where we at?
Planning Commission.
Oh, there we go, appointment changes to the planning commission pages one thirty-six and one forty-one. We're through one forty-one, excuse me. Counsel?
This is, these are different than the ones we did real early.
This is the first, this is one of the, one of the, one is the first one, the earlier one, and we've read that, the other one is the next one, would be removal of Teresa Waterhouse.
Okay.
Yes, if we're doing this the same way, then you would have two motions, the first motion would be to remove Teresa Waterhouse, you've already removed Keer in a previous motion during this meeting. And then your second motion would be to add, excuse me if I say the name wrong, bunch.
Move to approve Teresa Waterhouse.
Second?
No, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you, counselors. Next will be to approve the new additions.
I would move to approve the new addition.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be, oh, I'll get down here. There's going to be request to establish a one, one point oh, one point zero FTC Operations Management Division in the Public Works Department, page one forty-two. Who is going to conduct the staff report on that?
That's me, Mayor.
That you
Chris, I'm here somewhere.
There, I see you over here, so please take, it's your floor.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, last and hopefully not least, here we go. So there's a staff memo in your packet on page one forty-two, and I'm here tonight to request that you authorize us to create a new full-time position in Public Works for an operations manager. The current structure in the city has two directors who split responsibility for Public Works. My title is Public Works Operations Director, and Jeff Blaine is Public Works Engineering and Community Development Director. This is a little bit of an unusual organizational structure, but we've been working under this for, for about five years since two thousand and fifteen. In the next biennial budget, you'll see a change to the structure. Jeff's position will be reclassified to become Community Development Director, and my position will be reclassified to become Public Works Director. That structure that we'll be moving to is the same one we had for many years before we developed this new one in two thousand and fifteen, and it's a much more traditional city department structure. So that change is scheduled to occur July first with the new budget, assuming that it's approved. And, but the demands, particularly within community development, have meant that Jeff has already been pulled over to primarily oversee that department. So to compensate for that, we have Stacy Bel Castro, who's the city engineer, is currently working as the acting engineering director. Eventually, I'll be moving down to City Hall to step into the Public Works Director position, but unlike Stacy's role in engineering, there's no senior management position in operations. So when my position is reclassified, there will not be an operations manager or someone else to be in charge at operations. Operations has almost eighty-five employees working across twenty-six or something programs, so it's a pretty complicated work group and needs a senior leader in that role. So the position I'm requesting here is to create an operations manager position, that position, job title existed before I became operations director, I was operations manager, and we'll be going back to that structure. The reason I'm asking for this now, rather than waiting till July first, is because we're already making some of these changes in how we're working, there have been cascading effects, and it would be best if we could deal with those now. So until the operations manager position is filled, I'll be managing operations, but I'm also taking on increasing job duties with engineering to try to help Stacy and get over to engineering as quickly as I can. I've already done interviews and selected an employee to be promoted to operations manager, but that promotion will create a vacancy in her existing position, which is wastewater superintendent. So until that wastewater superintendent position is filled, then that employee will be essentially doing two jobs, I'll be doing two jobs, and the longer we have people doing two jobs at a high level, the more likely we are to mess that up. So my request is that we go ahead and create the operations manager position now, so that we can recruit to fill the wastewater position and get everybody back to just doing one job as quickly as possible, rather than continuing on until July first. I want to point out that there is a cost to doing this, so I've included the dollar amount in the memo for an operations manager for the rest of this fiscal year, it's about forty-three thousand dollars. The funding for this position, like almost every position in Public Works, does not come from the general fund, funding for this position will come through chargebacks to the water fund, sewer, stormwater and, and street funds. So there's adequate funding in all of those funds to support this addition, and I'm requesting that you approve that tonight so we can start to move forward. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Counselor Johnson, thank you, thank you, Director Bailey. Counselor Johnson?
I'm finding my mic, okay. Thanks, Chris, I think this new structure, or new structure or the old structure just makes so much more sense. I remember when it all changed, and I thought, man, that, that, that's kind of really putting a wrench in the system, you know, and so this is, I think, is simpler, and I don't want anybody doing two jobs because you're burnt out, and, you know, I don't want to lose anybody, so I think this structure is a good way to go, and I am totally in support of it, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Chris.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you, and again, it's, I'm still learning, do I understand you correctly that this, this position would be fully funded from what you referred to as chargebacks? And could you please define that term for me?
Okay.
Thank you, I haven't had my budget in class yet, so
No, I know.
Any of them.
You'll understand it all in about four or five years.
Thank you.
It just takes some time, so it's no problem. So, the Public Works Department almost entirely is made up of separate funds, we have water, sewer, stormwater, streets. The operations manager position works across The operations manager position works across all of those funds. So that position um, is paid based on the work they do for water, sewer, uh, streets and stormwater. It's paid across those funds. So it may be, and I don't know the exact percentage, so I apologize, but let's say it's um, 25% from each. There's four funds. So they may, 25% of their uh, costs may come from each of those four funds. I don't think it's that simple, but it's something like that. So that's what a chargeback is. So that person's time is charged back to those funds. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
Counselor Smith, do you have anything?
I don't. I, I approve. It makes sense to me.
Counselor Bartholomew.
I'm looking forward to the, to them filling the position quickly.
Thank you.
Counselor Kapinski?
Uh, do you need a motion of any kind or just a thumbs up or what?
We do need a motion and a vote because this is creating a new position that doesn't currently exist in the budget.
I move to approve the creation of a new position as outlined.
A nice second then.
Lots of seconds. So all of, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, let me get back to the beginning of the agenda. Uh-oh, where'd it go? Where'd it go? This is talking. Okay. Going down to one screen is difficult. Let me get back to it. There it is. Okay, I'll be back in a sec. Also, next thing is should be business from the council.
Actually, actually, Mayor, can I, can I point out that we missed section 11?
Oh, gee, we sure did. No, that's a consent calendar. I'll explain. We went through that already. It's a consent calendar.
Do we do appointment to transient lodging tax committee?
That's, that was a part of the consent calendar. We adopted it already.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, that's good. Then we'll, we'll sit down and go through everything.
That's why it, it was all in one motion, I guess.
Yes.
Versus piece by piece. Thank you.
Now, we'll sit down and go through everything. Uh, business from Counselor Olson.
I just wanted to point out to Stacy that if you're concerned about one of those, you ask to uh, have that discussed. And if nobody is worried about any of those, uh, somebody moves to adopt the whole darn thing. And that's what it is. Yeah.
Thank you, because I, I wasn't worried about them, but I didn't understand that we were pulling them all together. So I appreciate that clarification.
I had like two, an hour and a half with you today because you got sworn in, so. So business from the council. I'm going to go from the top. Thank you, Stacy, for that. Uh, Counselor Johnson?
I am not, your honor, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Bartholomew.
Uh, no more, no more now, but thank you very much. I really appreciate being here. I'm humbled and I am so looking forward to the opportunities ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, you're, and you're most welcome. Counselor Olson?
I just want to remind again, don't throw away that credit card from the government because it's worth quite a bit of money. And some people are throwing them away. They think it's junk mail, but it's not. It's dollars.
All right, thank you, Counselor Olson. That's a great reminder. Did we put something out on social media for that or the city website?
Uh, for, I'm not. I'm going to cash it here one of these days.
Well, I was asking, Counselor Olson, I was asking if we got something out on social media about that. Like a PSA.
Matt, you might comment if, if you have.
Um, I, I'd like to vet that information first before we post it on social um, with the IRS, uh, just to make sure that everything's up to snuff and accurate. But yeah, if it's, if it's true, we will definitely share a post from them.
Thank you very much, Matt. I appreciate it. Counselor Kapinski?
Nothing.
Nothing. Uh, Counselor Matilda Novak?
Um, I have nothing actually, but I do want to comment on Counselor Olson, uh, what he just said because I have someone in my life who received one of these things that looks like a credit card, but isn't. So I can verify, I haven't received one personally. I've never gotten two cents, but I'm keeping my eyes open and a lookout on my mail. Um, I, I can verify from what someone in my life has said that they received something that initially they thought was junk and it wasn't. It was the credit card that you had to jump through a lot of hoops. This person wanted to put, uh, make a deposit into their checking account with it. And apparently they're set up such that they want you to spend the money. So you have to jump through a lot of extra hoops if you want to deposit it. That's my understanding and I just wanted to put that out there in terms of verification.
Thank you very much, Counselor Novak. Counselor Marilyn Smith, you have anything?
Uh, I do. Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have a statement that I would like to read this evening. On Monday, the mayor and council received a letter from Nancy Greenman, a former member of the Human Relations Commission and a recipient of the commission's Human Relations Award for 2017. Ms. Greenman returned the award because of events of the past year that have perverted the purpose of the commission and the council's failure to address the actions of Commission Member Joe Ray Perkins in supporting the attempts to overturn the national election of November 3rd and her participation at the armed and violent insurrection at the US Capitol on January 6th. I support Americans' First Amendment right to free speech, but that stops with hate speech and speech and actions that promote and encourage violence and promulgate and perpetuate lies. These words and actions directly oppose the charge and purpose of our commission. I offer my sincere apology to former Commissioner Greenman, who is my friend, and hereby mo, move to remove Ms. Perkins from the Human Relations Commission.
Give a second.
I'll second that.
I would second that, yes. And then I'd like to add my name to that very excellent letter, if I could.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute, discussion?
Oh, so, excuse me, uh, Counselor Kapinski?
Yes, uh, remember back from a couple of years ago, probably more than that now, when we had the first major blow up at our HRC meeting? Uh, when it was a standing room only uh, crowd, there was a few statements thrown around that were uh, got a little out of hand. And uh, it's come to the culmination possibly of this last November or this, this past uh, election. And I've had, how do I say it? Uh, more than a few emails to me about uh, summarily dismissing Joe Ray. And every one of them I have uh, answered with a specific uh, email. Some of you received it. I don't know if all of you have. Anybody that emails me gets the same response, but uh, I'm just scared that we're, it's a slippery slope that we're starting on if we go down this route. But I'm, I'm just going to read uh, what uh, I've actually sent to everybody who actually has sent me an email. Thank you for your comments. While I do not agree with Joe Ray Perkins' political beliefs, one iota, as a lifetime member of the DFW and DAV, I will defend her right to have them and to use her, yours and my absolute constitutional right to assemble and peacefully protest. Obviously, storming and breaching the Capitol does not fall into that realm. However, simply being there and in proximity to the events that unfolded, while distasteful as that is to many folks, it does not cross the line, in my opinion. Even SCOTUS upheld the neo-Nazis marching in Skokie because of their constitutional rights. And that, and I gave the website link, which I can pass on to anybody. That said, if it can be shown that she actually actively participated in the storming and breaching of the Capitol, then I would have no qualms whatsoever not only removing her from HRC, but also having her arrested. What I've read in the DH articles do not rise to that extreme, in my opinion. Regardless, when her term does end, I will replace her at that time. Understand, we, city council, will be addressing the makeup and ground rules for HRC and other commissions and boards soon. Our democracy is and always has been messy, but I know of no other process that is better. This too shall pass. And that is what I have sent to every single person that has sent me an email. So I am going to vote no on this recommendation for those reasons that I've just stated.
I stand with Counselor Kapinski.
Any other counsel would like to make a comment, need discussion? So we had a motion and a second.
I'd like to have a whole poll vote, please.
Thank you very much, Counselor Smith.
The motion before you is to remove Joe Ray Perkins from the HRC. Dick Olson.
Yes.
Matilda Novak.
Mike, come on.
I'm muted. My apologies, I'm muted. No.
Stacy Bartholomew.
Yes.
Ray Kapinski.
No.
Stacy Johnson.
Yes.
Marilyn Smith.
Yes.
That's four yes and two no. That motion passes.
Okay, I'll jump in with one other quick statement then. Uh, I do have a candidate in mind for replacement for her. Um, and I will get in contact with that person and have her put in her application so we can get that on board.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Uh, next thing is the meeting, the next me, oh. Go back to the website here. Uh, excuse me, I, my thing reset. City Council. Materials. To the packet. Um, and then the last thing would be the next meeting. Um, I have nothing from the council. I thank the council for their attention and time today. I thank everybody participating in this particular meeting. And I appreciate the open and honest feedback I receive from the public. And I hope that we move forward uh, better together. Uh, what we just, what would just happen, um, yes, but Counselor Johnson?
I was going to say, do we have any staff reports? I, if the city manager had anything, I didn't know if you were going to cover that.
Wasn't on here, but do you have anything, Counselor, uh, City Manager?
The only thing I have is to, to draw your attention to the February schedule that you get. Okay, so it's, it's uh, it's quite a altered uh, schedule. So notwithstanding the fact that uh, the ordinance won't take effect, uh, moving start times to six o'clock. You still have some, several start times at six next, uh, next month, just because we've had to add some trainings, okay? And then we have the retreat as well on Saturday, the, the 13th. And then uh, continuing on, on Monday and Tuesday, the 15th and 16th. So just take a good look at that calendar when you get a chance and, and make adjustments to your own personal, personal calendar as appropriate.
All right, thank you, Peter. So I have nothing. Again, I'm going to finish up with saying thank you for your attention and time today. And everybody be safe this evening in the troubles. And um, have a good evening. Next meeting is February 8th, work session at 4:00 PM. Um, and after that would be, we have a 5:15 joint planning meeting with the Planning Commission. On, on Wednesday, the 10th, we have a 7:15 regular meeting. And the meetings are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Night, John Boy.
Night, Mary Ellen.